Hello, everybody. Welcome. My name is Juan Carlos Ocaña-Chiu. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I will be your moderator tonight. I wanted to take a moment to welcome everyone. This is the Thursday, July 6th, public hearing of the Independent District Commission. The purpose of tonight's hearing is for community members to provide testimony on the Independent District Commission's plan, draft plan, for Portland's geographic districts. Before we get started, I wanted to take a minute to go over some of the meeting logistics. This meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted online. We have American Sign Language and Spanish interpretation available tonight. To access the Spanish interpretation, please go to the interpretation table and sign in to receive your simultaneous interpretation headset. I believe the table is in the back, near the entrance. Also, to access American Sign Language interpretation, go to the table, and they will connect you with the interpreters. To sign up for public testimony, please go to the signing table at the entrance at any point, and you will be put on the queue to give testimony tonight. For our time together, the Independent District Commission co-chairs will provide us with an educational presentation to give you an overview of the commission's proposals, and then we will open the public testimony period for community members to testify. We will conclude the evening with some closing remarks from the commission members. If time allows, the commission may open the hearing to answering any questions that you, the public present here tonight, may have. And in addition to that, I wanted to mention that there are other ways to provide public input besides being here tonight. The public comment period closes on Saturday, July 22nd. The ways how you can provide input additionally are: One, we're holding two in-person hearings in each of the proposed districts to receive feedback, and we will also hold one virtual citywide hearing via Zoom. You can also submit your comments by email. The email address is districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov. Again, that's districtcommission, one string, at portlandoregon.gov. You can also provide testimony or comments by calling 311. You can also file a public comment card here tonight. You can fill our online survey at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission/draftplan. I'll repeat that. And finally, you can also mail your written comments to the Office of Management and Finance, Independent District Commission, 1120 Southwest 5th Avenue, Room 901, Portland, Oregon 97204. That is, again, Office of Management and Finance, Independent District Commission, 1120 Southwest 5th Avenue, Room 901, Portland, Oregon 97204. And now, I will pass the microphone over to one of our Independent District Commission co-chairs. I believe it's Commissioner Judd. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'm Commissioner Judd, and this is Commissioner Laurenti. We're going to be the co-chairs for the third half of, third half, the third piece of this IDC work. And we have the rest of our commissioners up here as well. So we wanted to welcome them and thank them for their support this evening. So thank you for coming out. Before we get to the public commentary, we're going to do an educational presentation. And it's going to be a little technical, but I think this information is very helpful for you. Currently, all Portland's elected officials can live anywhere in the city, and they're elected by voters all across the city. Under the new system approved by voters in November 2022 election, four geographic districts will be created, with three city councilors who reside in each one of the districts, elected by representatives within those districts. So that now, we'll have 12 district-based councilors rather than five at-large councilors. The Independent District Commission was created by voter-approved amendments to the city charter. It is tasked with preparing and adopting the district plan for city council elections, starting with the election in November 2024. This primarily involves working with the community and professional experts to design the district maps that will be in place until the next redistricting cycle in 2030. The Independent District Commission consists of 13 voting members, as well as alternate and reserve alternate members. All of us were selected through an open, community-wide election process, appointed by the mayor, and confirmed by city council in 2023. As the name suggests, the Independent District Commission is a fully independent community body authorized to create the district plan for the city of Portland. The District Commission has a unique authority. If nine of the 13 voting commissioners approve the plan, then it's approved and adopted. However, if after two votes, the District Commission cannot reach the nine-vote supermajority, then the most recent version of the plan is referred to council for its consideration and adoption. As the District Commission prepares the district plan, we are guided by the voter-approved charter requirements and state and federal districting laws. We must use the voter-approved district criteria and any additional criteria we set forth. We required, we are required to hold nine public hearings. One public hearing has already been held before we developed the district, before we developed the district plan to seek public comment on whether any additional planned criteria should be considered. We voted not to add additional criteria to those specified in the adopted charter measure. Eight public hearings must be held, two in each of the proposed districts, before we vote to adopt the district plan. The district plan was made available a month ago, and we cannot vote on the final plan until one month after the last public hearing, which is going to be July 16th. We're actually holding nine public hearings. As one of them will be Zoom, there'll be eight in-person. This is the second in-person one, and we will have an online one coming up as well. The commission must adopt its district plan by no later than September 1st, 2023. We receive questions from community members about whether we can take more time, but the timeline was established in the voter-approved measure. These next few slides are somewhat technical, and we're going to share these to hope to help you have a broad understanding of what guides our work. Creating initial districts and district redistricting, excuse me, once a decade are processes controlled by two federal laws: the Equal Protection Clause and the Voting Rights Act. Under the Equal Protection Clause, the creation of initial districts and the periodic updating of districts must be substantially equal in the population. This requirement is known as "one person, one vote." The primary tool used in the redistricting process is the federal census. The U.S. Constitution mandates a census every 10 years to count every resident in the United States. The census includes basic demographic data, including total population by age, race, housing, and housing occupancy. Because district populations shift over time, district boundaries must be redrawn after the census is administered every 10 years to ensure that each person's vote remains equally weighted. We've received questions from community members asking us to consider how population in the city might shift in the future, but we must work with the data from the 2020 census and leave that to the next redistricting in 2030. The Voting Rights Act of 1965 requires districts that do not discriminate on basis of race, color, or membership in a protected language minority group. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act prohibits district plans that are intended to be racially discriminatory or that are shown to have racially discriminatory results. The commission is required to create the district plan using the voter-approved district criteria. As shared earlier, the commission decided not to add to those already approved. The voter-approved district criteria requires that the district commission ensures that each district, as nearly as possible, is one, contiguous, and compact, meaning each district is one geographically connected piece without any unconnected elements. The smallest element that we are working with to design these maps is a census block. Two, it utilizes existing geographic and political boundaries, meaning natural and man-made boundaries such as highways, mountains, and rivers, which already often divide communities and make innate borders, or political boundaries like legislative county or school districts. Three, not divide communities of common interest. Communities of interest are recognized by academics and jurisdictions throughout the country as groups that share a common policy concern and would benefit from being distributed together. Dividing a community of interest often leads to decreased ability to advocate for their community's needs or priorities. Five, it is connected by transportation links, meaning highways, roads, streets, or public transportation. And six, it's of equal population, meaning each district has the same number of people. The commission is working to create a district plan with less than 5% deviation in population between districts. The District Commission must also ensure that no district will be drawn for the purpose of, one, favoring any political party and company elected official or other person, and, two, diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. The criteria prescribed in the charter are similar to those, what are similar to what has been upheld in federal courts regarding the formation of political districts across the country. In creating districts, data is used to define the criteria. On the screen, you can see examples of some data sets that can help define district criteria. Some criteria require using specific data sets. For example, population and any Voting Rights Act-related issue must use the data released in the 2020 Decennial Census and the most recent American Community Survey. The American Community Survey is an annual survey at a smaller scale than the census that compiles additional demographic and socioeconomic community data. Some data sets can be used to help define multiple criteria. For example, school district boundaries or high school enrollment areas could be considered. An existing political boundary or a community of common interest because of its quality and effectiveness is a shared concern. The criteria regarding communities of common interest is where we most want community input from all of you. You know how you define your community by your shared experiences and concerns. We want to hear about those. The District Commission has been working with the technical districting consultants to gather different data sets to help inform the district criteria. The data sets you see on the screen are not representative of all the data used by the commission. Data also used include socioeconomic status, voter precincts, public transportation routes, homeownership versus renters, access to public goods and services, and much more. The District Commission is committed to ensuring that the districting process is transparent and community-driven. Portlanders have engaged in a variety of ways to inform the creation of draft maps. We've already received over three and a half hours of public testimony, hundreds of public comments, and almost 200 draft map options submitted by members of the public through our online mapping tools. Commissioners also attended community-led district events, held individual meetings with community leaders, and spent hours reflecting on what we've heard. The commission has made a deliberate effort to center the voices of those who have not historically been a part of city decision-making. With that background about the District Commission's work, process, and a little detail about districting, I'm going to turn things over to Commissioner Laurenti to talk about our draft maps.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for making time in your day to be here. My name is Josh Laurenti, he/him. I have the privilege of co-chairing the commission alongside Commissioner Judd. And thank you, Commissioner Judd, for grounding us in that very informative recap. I want us to pivot now to talking about the draft district plan and discussion of the draft maps themselves. So on June 1st, the District Commission released three maps for your consideration that outline potential boundaries for these new electoral districts. Each of these three maps, named Alder, Cedar, and Maple, adhere to the draft, or, excuse me, adhere to the district criteria that voters approved last November and are directly informed by community input that we've received to date. So I'm going to begin by describing what these three maps share in common, and then I will go into the two key areas where these maps differ, and then we'll look at each of these maps individually to get deeper into the underlying rationale behind the different trade-offs and considerations that these maps are making. So we'll begin first with the common themes and map characteristics. So you'll notice that all three of these maps uplift representation in East Portland by connecting communities east of I-205 in a single district. And if you look at how this district is drawn, the commission was also able to ensure that the Park Rose, David Douglas, Reynolds, and Centennial School districts are also connected within that same district. You'll notice as well that all three of these maps use the same combination of I-205 and 82nd Avenue to define that border, that East Portland border, and that was to accommodate the interests of the Jade District as well as the Lentz neighborhood. If you shift your attention now to the North Portland District, shown in yellow on your maps, you'll notice that all the neighborhoods of North Portland are included in a single district, with the exception of neighborhoods that are a part of the Park Rose School District. And if you focus your attention around the, how the district is drawn around the airport, that was so that the homes and businesses and organizations on the north and south side of Columbia Boulevard are all connected in that North Portland District. The last key characteristic of this North Portland District is that historic Albina, which is that area where the I-84 MAX line meets the Steel Bridge north of that. All three of these maps ensure that historic Albina is preserved within that North Portland District. And that was out of consideration for the history of displacement to communities there and in recognition of the work being done to confront that history. The last key theme that I'll share, looking at the West District in dark blue, all communities west of the Willamette River are connected in the same district. So you remember Commissioner Judd gave or showed us the list of criteria that the commission had to follow. One of those was to follow natural geographic boundaries, and the Willamette River is perhaps the most defining boundary, literally, in the middle of the city. So with that, I want to now pivot to identifying the two key areas where these maps will differ. The first of which answers the question, what communities on the east side of the river best connect to a West Portland District? So you'll notice that all three of these maps have a west-side district that crosses the river at some point, and that is because the population on the west side of the river does not, isn't sufficient to meet the equal population criteria. So each of these maps, guided by different rationales, connect different east-side communities to the west-side district. And we'll get into those differences when we look at the maps individually. The second key area of difference that you'll notice with these maps is how to define the border between that North Portland District in yellow and that Southeast Central District shown in teal. So now, I want us to pivot to looking at each of these maps individually. We'll start with the Alder map, and we'll get into the, in a little more detail here. So the Alder map is built around preserving established neighborhood boundaries. On the Alder map, the west-side district includes the neighborhoods of Selwood, Westmoreland, Eastmoreland, and Reed, because these are the east-side communities that share the most demographic and socioeconomic similarities, two communities on the west side of the river. They are also connected by the Selwood and Ross Island bridges. I also want to point out that the Alder map divides the central city among three districts using the Willamette River and I-84 as boundaries in order to promote engagement across districts with central city issues and economic opportunities, and also to distribute significant assets and institutions among multiple districts. Looking now at the Cedar map, the Cedar map is built around prioritizing transit corridors. On the Cedar map, the west-side district includes, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to identify one key difference with the Alder map. Backing up slightly, thank you. So I talked about what east-side communities are connected to the west-side district. The other key area of difference was how to define the border between that North Portland District in yellow and the Teal District. The Alder map, again, guided by neighborhood association boundaries, uses those boundaries along Sandy Boulevard to define that border. Just wanted to make that abundantly clear. Now, going back to the Cedar map. The Cedar map is guided by transit corridors. On the Cedar map, the west-side district includes the Central East Side Industrial Council District, as well as the Brooklyn and Selwood neighborhoods, because these are the east-side communities that share eight bridge connections across the Willamette River and bus and MAX connections to the east. The North Portland border on the Cedar map is defined using Sandy Boulevard from about 37th out to 82nd. And the, and by using these transit corridors as boundaries, the hope is that these will help bind these districts together. Lastly, looking at the Maple map, the Maple map is built around keeping much of the central city together. So on the Maple map, the west-side district includes the neighborhoods of Buckman, Kearns, and part of the Hosford-Abernathy neighborhood. And the border between the North Portland District and the Southeast Central District is defined using a combination of neighborhood association boundaries as well as Sandy Boulevard. On the Maple map, east-side neighborhoods with a high percentage of renters, again, that's the Buckman, Kearns, and part of the Hosford-Abernathy neighborhoods, these are the communities that share the district with the west, because they are also, they also have a high percentage of renters when you look at the areas around Goose Hollow, Old Town, University, and South Waterfront. So now, questions for community. The Independent District Commission has been committed to ensuring that the final district plan is reflective of the priorities of Portlanders from all backgrounds, with a specific focus on creating an equitable and inclusive process. Now that the three maps have been released for your input, the commission is committed to engaging with even more Portlanders to hear additional feedback, opinions, questions, concerns, and ideas. The community feedback we hear will be integral to informing the final district plan that we will vote on in August. This is a collective opportunity for all of us to fundamentally reshape our city government for the better. The gravity of this task cannot be overstated. Not only will these districts determine the makeup of city council for the November 2024 election, but the map will be in place until after the 2030 census. It is our hope that in these three maps, we will, these three maps will prompt reactions and reflections about how Portlanders want to be represented in City Hall going forward. We understand that some of what has been presented today is unfamiliar and maybe technical to some, but our hope is that this presentation helped give folks a better understanding of our work to date. Before we begin public testimony, I want to share that there are many ways that the public can provide feedback or have their questions answered. We are accepting public comment through Saturday, July 22nd, and you can engage by using our online comment form, sending an email to districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov. Again, you can call 311, or you can write a letter to the address shown on the screen here. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and I will pass it back to our moderator to begin public testimony.
Thank you, Commissioner Laurenti. We will now begin our public testimony, and I'm going to explain how it will work. For folks who didn't sign up and want to give testimony, you can do so now at the signing table, which is back there. We have our volunteers raising their hands. Thank you. For the people who, for everyone who's providing testimony tonight, you will have three minutes to share your thoughts. When giving testimony, we ask that you please do the following. One, state your name. Second, your ZIP code or neighborhood, if you'd like. Third, if you are testifying on behalf of an organization, please state that. And four, identify which maps or single map you are testifying on. And lastly, we ask that you please remember to go slowly for our interpreters. We also have some rules that we have in place in order to make sure that everyone here tonight is heard and feels welcome. Disruptive conduct, such as interrupting someone, not concluding your testimony during the allocated time, yelling or using foul language will not be allowed. If there are any disruptions, a warning will be given, and a further warning may result in you being removed for the remainder of the meeting. We also want to make sure that, again, everybody who signs up can be heard. So we thank you in advance for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome and have this opportunity. So I will now begin to call the people who have signed up to testify. On my list, I have the following names. Bear with me for a minute. I seem to have lost that. No, here it is. We'll be calling people in two, or actually just one by one tonight. So please come to, forward to the podium that is set up here and as I call you. And please forgive me if I mispronounce any of your names. The first person is Mike Rogers.
And there's some additional seating in the front for folks standing in the back. We've got some chairs up here.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time and effort into this project and for taking public testimony. I am a long-term tenure resident of the Buckman neighborhood, and I'm here as a private citizen. My map that I am in favor of is the Maple map, primarily in that the Alder map keeps intact the inner southeast neighborhoods together with the rest of southeast. I agree with the rationale that it, demographically and economically, connects Westmoreland and surrounding neighborhoods with the west side, whereas I view inner southeast neighborhoods as not so aligned with the west side. In terms of the Cedar map, I don't follow the rationale of following major transit lines. I also don't understand the rationale in favor of the Maple map of why the renter heaviness of inner southeast fits well with the renter heaviness of the west side. I'm more in favor of Alder in that it keeps Westmoreland and similar neighborhoods aligned with the west side, which I don't feel attached to as a member of inner southeast and Buckman and my neighboring communities of Kearns and Hosford-Abernathy. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, I do support the Alder map for reasons I'm not jazzed about the Maple map.
Thank you. Next, we have Melissa Stewart.
Okay, thank you for allowing public testimony. And I'm, I can't support any of the maps, I'm sorry. But along with the gentleman who just spoke, I'm from the Buckman neighborhood too. And the notion that you would weight everything according to the number of renters in the districts you have set up for us to connect to horrifies me, because that ignores all the homeowners. And it's a political distinction that you must know. Renters vote quite differently than homeowners do. So I would encourage you to let the southeast neighborhoods stay together, because we really do have much more in common entirely and nothing in common with people on the west side or across the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Terry Parker.
Thank you. My name's Terry Parker. I have issues with all three of the maps. I have lived in the Rose City Park neighborhood for most of my life during a 60-year-plus lifespan. I recently, I have reoccurly been involved with my neighborhood, and there has always been a connection with Hollywood to the west and Madison South just across the street to the east. Cedar is the worst of the three maps, slicing Rose City Park neighborhood in half, right down the middle via Sandy Boulevard. With all three, you have taken a meat cleaver approach to central northeast Portland, chopping it up into pieces and making Rose City Park along with Madison South and Roseway or Portland. parts of that, the stepchildren of southeast uplift. The Oregon Senate, House districts, the metro districts, and the Multnomah County Commissioner districts are all different in southeast Portland. The relationship between northeast and southeast is also geographically severed by I-84. How is this better for all representation? It's not. It seems as if one of your screwed priorities has been keeping minority race populations in segregated districts opposed to having all districts equitable and diverse while focusing on common geographic area neighborhoods where the interests overlap. Furthermore, not trading all neighborhoods equally can be viewed as discrimination. To make districting whole, one of two things needs to happen. Either the central northeast neighborhoods of Hollywood and possibly Grant Park or Beaumont-Wilshire need to be coupled with the central southeast neighborhoods, thereby giving more of a central east side balance where common interest northeast neighborhood voices north of I-84 can actually be heard in the larger southeast geographical area. Or Rose City Park, Madison South, and Roseway all need to be moved to the same northern district, thereby keeping all central district voices geographically north of I-84 together, having the same district representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rick Johnson.
Yes. I would like to testify. I'm from Rick Johnson. I'm from the Buckman neighborhood. And Buckman, the map I support is Alder, because I believe that the Eastmoreland is more socially-economic aligned with the West Side. I also believe that Buckman's the oldest east side neighborhood in the whole city, and you're going to throw it over on the West Side now. And we're part of southeast uplift, not the West Side. I don't even know what their neighborhood organization is over there. So I think this is, you know, a misnomer that all the renters are, you know, the renters in the Pearl are a lot different than the renters in the inner east side. I'll tell you that right now. So my support is for the Alder map, and I think that's the one you should go with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Timothy Ryan.
Thank you. I actually had questions as opposed to commentary, so I think I should yield my time until later? Or should I ask my questions now?
The queue is not much longer, so we will definitely, I believe, will have time for questions later.
All right. These might be very basic, because it's very new to me, this process. The first one comes right off in the material that you sent out that was on the website, and it involves, and it was even brought up by Commissioner Judd, the most recent plan in case of a majority not being reached. What defines the most recent plan? That was really unclear to me. That would be my first question. And then the second one involved, I believe it was the Maple neighborhood, and it talked about its making the central city contiguous in terms of a district, and how that jibes with the, what is it, 2030 central city plan? And it made me wonder, having not read the plan, how much impact and influence that plan has over deciding these maps. So those are my questions.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, I believe there will be time for questions later on, so the commissioners will address your questions at that time. But thank you for posing them. Next, I would like to call Marie Filippi.
Good evening. I have been involved in the Brooklyn neighborhood for over 30 years, on the board, as chair and treasurer and whatever, and do the newsletter still, hand-delivered, okay? We have a real neighborhood, and we're the smallest probably of almost all the neighborhoods in Portland. But my questions are, why are we changing this? What is driving, I'd like to know, what is driving us to districts instead of neighborhoods, associations? What are the advantages of using the term districts instead of neighborhoods? And why divide the existing neighborhoods, like every map has divided our neighborhood? And number three, what is the cost of dividing into 12 districts and people in charge to what it is now? It seems like it will be a heck of a lot more. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susan Lindsay.
Hello. Susan Lindsay, 97214, co-chair of Buckman Community Association, representing the Buckman Community Association as a whole. One thing I just want to say, because I heard the narrative last night, and I've heard it again tonight, about the Cedar. It keeps referring to the Central East Side Industrial District as though it's a neighborhood, and it leaves out the fact that the Cedar plan divides. It divides the Buckman neighborhood in two. The Buckman neighborhood goes from the Willamette River, the east bank of the Willamette River, to 28th Avenue. So the Cedar plan absolutely divides Kearns, and divides Buckman, and divides Hosford Abernathy. However, the narrative makes it sound like what it does is it consolidates the Central East Side. So I just want to, I want to point that out, because one of your key criteria is to not divide communities of common interest. And I want to make clear that the Buckman neighborhood from the river to 28th Avenue is aligned with Kearns, with Sunnyside, with Richmond, with the inner southeast neighborhoods that it has been involved with politically, with activities, with social activities, with livability issues for decades. And I'm frankly kind of, I wasn't appalled last night. Tonight, I'm appalled. I am appalled. And especially when I hear this part about the renters. I can, I think it's so wacky, this concept, that it's positive to try to put all the renters in one district. Again, that diminishes the rights and the power of people who rent. If you have one area full of renters, and you have three representatives from there, and you have three other districts full of homeowners, why are we trying to do that? I mean, you've taken the grace to try to recognize the issues around the displacement in Albina, and to pull Albina out of the central city. So then what you do, you call the Maple map, much of the central city. I mean, well, come on. What it does is it, it's not right to try to pile all renters into one district, and I agree. The renters in Buckman are far different from the renters in the Pearl District. So that leaves me, I'm pragmatic. You have three maps, your time limited. I go Alder. And why do I go Alder? I'll tell you why I go Alder, because I've lived in Portland my entire life. The first swimming lessons I ever took were in the Sellwood pool. That's where I learned to swim. I know the area very well, and it is much more aligned socio-economically, politically, and demographically with the West Side. I would say if the West Side will not divide, and you have not chosen to divide the West Side, then if you must take something from the East Side, I'm going to ask you to take the area of Westmoreland, Eastmoreland, and Sellwood, because that's the right thing to do politically and socio-economically. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matthew Timberlake.
Thanks. I'm glad to follow Susan. I know we see it differently. I represent Eastmoreland. And so that was timely. Yeah. So for those of us who are in Sellwood, Westmoreland, and Eastmoreland, this notion that somehow we match the West Side socio-economically, so we have something in common with them, is a terrible way to try to divide people up. We have nothing in common with the West Side's interests. Right? I mean, we are proud, we all are proud east side neighborhoods, and we, Eastmoreland is a proud member of the inner southeast. We share concerns about the rail yard, about transportation corridors, about the environment, about the tree canopy that's disappearing in the East Side, about, we have all of those concerns in common, not to mention that we shop, live, work, and create with all of our neighbors on the East Side. So we, I think, I know I speak for a lot of people in the Morelands and Sellwood when I say we have no interest in being lumped with the West Side. I can't blame Susan for wanting to, for being in favor of Alder, but, and of course, we're in favor of Maple, but these are two not great alternatives. And I think you're going to get a lot of feedback that way. And we understand that this is based on population, and you were handed a pretty bad deck of cards by the Charter Commission, trying to divide Portland into four groups with equal populations. But splitting up southeast Portland from the rest of the southeast, we would very much like you to know that that is strongly opposed by everyone I've talked to in our neighborhood. And I don't disagree with Susan either, except about the socioeconomic status as a way to divide that up. We just have nothing in common with them. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Peter Miller.
Thanks for all the work you folks are doing, and I'm Peter Miller. I live in 97214 off of Hawthorne. And I was waiting for someone from Sellwood area to speak, because from my standpoint, Alder looks like the best map, but I was wondering what someone would say from that other area, because the West Side, no one seems to like people on the West Side. But that's not really fair. But you have a problem of having to make some kind of compromise because of the population, equal population. So it's kind of like a hernia. You have to push it one way or another. And I, it's a difficult problem, and, you know, I think you came up some great options. From my standpoint, living in that neighborhood, I've watched dogs, kids, and trees grow to full height. The Alder is the best for our little area, but I totally understand the sentiments from the gentleman from Sellwood, that he feels the opposite. So it's a difficult problem, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. I do not see anyone else on the signing sheet. However, we still have time, so I wanted to ask if there's anyone who feels called to testify tonight. Or you can just join us here. Just state your name for the record, please.
Thanks. As an expatriate Californian, whose family left Oregon in 1850, for better termites, I just wanted to say that the loveliness of the people who talk to you and the work that you all do is an impressive thing to see and observe. It's great civic, whatever. I know, I know that you noticed the river and declared that was an important natural boundary, and decided to keep the West Side together, which means that, given the numbers, right, you have about 12,000 eastsiders who don't have enough population to elect one of the three members, if they're all, even if they're all agreed on who that person should be. And I know that another preliminary decision you made at one of your earlier meetings was not to do the adjustment in the northern part of the city, leaving all of us disagreeing about which part of the south you should apparently alienate and force to join themselves with really dreadful people. I mean, what I notice is across the bridge from Sellwood is a cemetery, but this is another issue. So could you explain that reasoning, the thought behind that? We know that you have, if you don't come to a supermajority, this goes to the council, that, given the number of council members who don't like this whole thing, that doesn't seem like an attractive prospect, but I've never understood the reasoning behind that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a commissioner who would like to make a comment.
Well, first of all, my name is Amanda Monhaddis, a commissioner on this. A very, very fun commission, have really appreciated the experience and the project ahead of us. Just want to say thank you for all of your feedback perspective, and I want to respond to the final comment that was made, but I'm going to do a little bit of a backwards move in there, because I do think that, you know, we were handed criteria that was really broad in how it was defined, and I think it's important to recognize that. So there are decisions that are made along the way. Formally and formally, I do think that, given the time constraints, we did get to a point where it seemed like a natural boundary with the river, but as we look at the maps, I do think there is an open question about why we're not pulling West Side population into an East Side district, right? And so I think that this is part of the community process, of folks continuing to offer feedback and continuing to grapple with this. I think part of it also is recognizing that we're a group of citizen folks who aren't experts in mapmaking or map drawing, and so part of it is sort of taking our own experience, criteria once in front of us. And I actually do have a request for the group, if folks are so inclined for providing more feedback, because one of the early decisions we did make, and we had spoken about this earlier, was about what the criteria would look like, and how that criteria would be used to come to our final decision. And I had, at that time, put a question on the table about public goods and services, also referred to as assets, and how we divide those across different districts. And I think at that time, it was about, it was hard to imagine what that would even look like in practice. And so we felt like, we put the question in the public, and folks said, well, it feels like it's embedded in other criteria. And so two of the maps, I think, do actually put a lot of assets into a West Side district. And I have yet to hear from an eastsider, and I'm an eastsider myself, part of the Rose City neighborhood, so appreciating the representation here. But I have yet to hear from an eastsider who says, I want to be part of the West Side. I have yet to hear from a renter who says, I want to be associated with renters on the other side. I think personally what would help me make a final decision is to hear feedback from folks about this question around how assets in the central east side should be distributed across these districts, because the way they're set up in two of the maps is, three of the 12 commissioners would be making, basically representing those areas and those assets. But, you know, we've heard different arguments to say, well, that helps with the 2030 plan. The 2030 plan is not part of the criteria, so just to clarify that piece. I think it's part of a conversation. It doesn't mean it's part of formal criteria. But I would be curious to hear from folks, do you agree, or don't you agree, whether those assets should be in a West Side district? And just hearing that response from people, I'm a believer, and you have to trust the people, and so I appreciated the commentary during the criteria conversation. And in this space, I think understanding whether folks would like to see those in a West Side district or distributed across at least three districts would be really helpful in coming to a final decision. So that's my ask of the public. Tell your friends. We have at least seven more meetings. It would just be helpful for me to make a final decision. Thank you. And that's, a good example is like Omsi being included. All of the places, Omsi is a good example, is the one I can think of, because it's been brought up to me multiple times, being part of a West Side district versus an East Side district. So everything, you think about parks, a lot of the, you know, businesses in, being included in a West Side district. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're, it's safe to say that we're moving into the question and answer part of the hearing, so, yeah, the commissioners will be answering a number of the questions we heard, and we also kept a list in case we miss any. So Commissioner Lumley.
Thank you. My name's Paul Lumley. I'm a commissioner. Can you all hear me? Is this on? There it is, okay. Paul Lumley, Commissioner. So in answer to the question about why not take the, like, the St. John's area, move it over to the West Side, is because there was a strong desire to keep the north and northeast connected, because of the, there are several communities of common interest in the area, especially the African-American community. But also, I wanted to comment that we have three maps we're looking at to solicit your opinions. It doesn't mean we're going to vote on one of those maps specifically. Based on your input, we could create a different map entirely, so just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. There were other, we have a list here of the questions that we were able to track, and if we missed any, I would encourage anyone at this point, after we, we answer the questions that, that we wrote down, I will encourage folks to come to the podium and ask your, any other questions that you may have. So one question was, what defines the quote, the most recent plan, end quote, that will go to council if the commissioners cannot reach a supermajority decision?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to answer that because I, I've read that statement as well, and I'm not exactly sure what that means either. I don't know, I don't know if the commissioner knows that. Yeah, Sophia, is there?
Thank you, Sophia.
It's essentially whatever related to the last map we, we voted on.
It's the latest for the plan that you voted on.
So my understanding is, is this on again?
Yeah.
My understanding is that we'll take one vote on one map, and if it doesn't work, we'll take another vote on another map, and if we don't, if that doesn't pass, then that last map goes to city council. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
And they're called map plans.
Let's be clear, that makes it sound as if it's just an order thing.
Yes.
What are you saying, yes?
Well, if, if we approve the first map, then that's fine, but if we don't and we will go to the second vote and that doesn't pass, then whatever we voted on the second time, that's what goes before city council. Sophia's nodding.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, the...
I think the confusion is, it's not about these three maps. We will take all of the feedback we're getting from all of these, all of the people who've been submitting comments, the people who've testified, the people who testified at the hearings, and then we will create a map from all of that commentary from, and from these maps, and we will vote on that. And maybe we'll all, maybe we'll vote to approve the first map that we do, and maybe we won't, and then comments will come from other, from the commissioners about what they didn't like about the one we just voted on, and then we'll have a second map that we vote on. If that map, that second map, we can't reach the nine vote supermajority, that's the map that will go to city council.
But you're limited to two maps.
Yeah. Unless we vote on the first one and all say that we like that, in which case we're done.
We have a point of clarity.
Point, point of clarity is that we're limited to two votes, two formal votes. So we have, as Commissioner Judd said in his opening remarks, our last public hearing is July 16th. We have one full month before we are allowed to take the first official vote, and in that time, I think we have two full commission meetings. So we're going to be just like talking for hours about like processing everything that we have heard, synthesizing everything, you know, maybe looking at these three and tweaking them, maybe going back to the drawing board and kind of narrow, kind of opening the process again, and then narrowing, narrowing down. And so there, there are two votes, but there will probably be many maps that we are looking at, as we narrow down to like one that we will vote on. Does that clarify? That, but like two formal votes.
Thank you. The other questions that came from the testimony include, what is driving us or the commission to use districts instead of neighborhoods? So is there a commissioner that would like to address that? Commissioner?
Sure. And thank you for that, for that question. The voters actually are driving us towards that. This is, this is a plan that was set in motion by a vote in November that established through the Charter Commission recommendations, the adoption of the plan. We are executing one part of the plan, which is the defining of the, of the districts by drawing the map. And we should also say that when we say the plan, the plan is synonymous with the map. So there will be one map that either we, through a supermajority vote, approve, and that will be the map plan. So it's just the one map where we have drawn the lines, or failing a supermajority, the city council will. But it is through the will of the, of the voters that, that, that approved this particular revision to our approach to our, our representation in the city and governance.
Thank you, Commissioner. A related question was, why divide existing neighborhoods? Is there any commissioner?
So I, as Commissioner Judd had shared, the, so the question of why divide existing neighborhoods, I think with the district criteria, we are looking at many, many different things, and one of those is existing political and geographic boundaries, which we include as things like school district boundaries and neighborhood association boundaries. And one of the reasons that, for example, the Alder map and the Cedar map were two different ones that we decided to offer forward, is to get a pulse check from the community as to community priorities of which types of boundaries we tend to use. So in the Alder map, as Commissioner Lorente said, it really focuses on preserving as many of those neighborhood district, or as, as many of those neighborhood lines as possible in that Alder map. Whereas the Cedar map prioritizes those main transit corridors, kind of at the loss of some of those neighborhood boundaries. So this, this whole, as you have even heard in public comment this evening, this is an art and not a science, and we are weighing all of these different pieces kind of with and against each other. Sometimes they are in concert, sometimes they are in conflict, but we, we did intentionally offer those, those different maps that, that respond to the question, should we preserve neighborhood boundaries differently, to elicit community feedback and response? Because our, like number one priority here is that we do the best we can to make sure that these maps respond to and reflect the needs and priorities of as many Portlanders as possible. So hope that answers that question, and thank you for that as well.
Do you have an add-on on that?
Just a quick, quick add-on to that very well-put explanation. I appreciate that. This is the first take, you know, based on the criteria that were provided by your vote, even if you didn't vote for it, more did. So based on those criteria, I mean, that, that's what guides us. That's the, that's the track we're on. And we did, to the best of our opinion, in three different preliminary maps, try to conscientiously protect as many of the neighborhood association boundaries as possible. And when we deal with the population equity or equalness issue, equity's not the right word, we wanted to have equal populations to the extent that we could within a certain standard deviation, a lot of math stuff. And so given that and some other considerations, whether it's ease of transportation, or practice of transportation, or use of transportation to get you from, you know, a job to a faith center, to where your kids are, et cetera, sometimes that helped, that required modifying a boundary, or two, or three. And so we're working it. We're doing the best we can to come up with some options, and we want to hear from you through this process. Again, it's a work in progress. And I will mention very, very quickly the reference to the Central City 2035 Plan and also the East Portland Plan, two major plans that spent a lot of your time, a lot of your money, a lot of your souls into pulling together and adopting. They're adopted city policy. Are they our criteria? No, they're not. But it is adopted city policy, and is that something we keep in our mind? Some of us do. And so that's one of the reasons why in looking at these various options for maps, you might see a certain geographic area grouped together to reflect some of the years' worth of adopted policymaking that everyone approved to help make sure that that gets carried out in the future by future councils and future residents. So again, not one of our criteria, but something that some of us are keeping in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Another question was, and this question is based on the assumption that there will be 12 districts, the question was, what is the cost in, in assuming that it will be significantly more than having elections at large? So does any commissioner would like to answer that question?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. Unfortunately, that's outside of the scope of what this particular commission is set up to do. There is another commission that's looking at compensation, and so presumably they will come up with that, that, that dollar amount. But that's, that's outside of the scope of what this particular commission has set up to do. Yeah, so yeah, I think that was a point where, part of that question was about the cost to go to 12 districts. I think what she was trying to say was go from... You're going to look at this, at the city of Portland as a whole, right? And although this is the Maple map, we're going to talk about it in terms of like compactness and population density.
Close to the light.
Sorry. So we're going to talk about this in terms of compactness and population density. If you had to guess, where the densest population of Portland is, but look at this now, would it be the blue area, the beige area, the green area, or the teal area?
Teal.
Why is it teal?
Small. No. South, south east, then we're on the most populated.
Somebody said because it's small, right? Are you saying because it's drawn small?
No, because it, that's the small, they're all equal population, right? Each district is roughly an equal population, because that's your first criteria. And it's, it's a function of population over acreage, and the smallest ones can have the densest population.
Yeah. Why is it small? So why is that population so densely compact there is the question, right? That's a great point. It's small, it's small because it's so densely populated there. So one of the challenges is, and we kind of talked about this already, if you look west of the river, there is, in that northern section of the, of the west of the river, that's Forest Park. Not a lot of people live out there, right? If you look to the north along the Columbia, it's the airport, right, and runoff. So again, virtually densely populated. If you are, you're in, come along to the east side of Portland, there's a lot more industrial areas out here than it is in that quarter, kind of that central area, right? So the central area is dense, is densely populated, therefore small on a lot of these maps because, I'm sorry, it's smaller than that because it is so densely populated because there's less public land use in that area, right? So it's mostly neighborhood. And so just taking a corner of that, that's densely populated area, you can shift that equal population number fairly significantly, excuse, right? And so the, the, the area with, kind of the least population is west of the river. So what that means then is, well, what it has implied is that the west side has to cross the river somewhere, whether it's Sellwood, whether it's Central Business and the Buckman area, or whether it's further north, right? And that becomes the problem because it is, is, is not as densely populated. Now, the reason why, so that's kind of where, as a commission, we settled. But it's, it's coming up and listening to you guys and talk about where you would like the lines to actually be drawn and the considerations, that will lead us to go back and redraw them. And I, I was like, Matthew, were you on a call?
I was, yeah.
Yeah, I remember, I, I could have...
Good chat.
Yes. And the same thing happened to Matthew when he was on a call previously. He followed a, a lady from Buckman, and she slammed, and she said, look, if you got to jump the river, I give you... Sellwood. And Matthew came up behind him, just like his evening, and said, well, I appreciate that, but we, we have nothing in common with the west side either. And so hearing this debate continue is, is, is very informative, and so we, and all the comments is appreciated. The discussion about renters is extremely important, right? I think that helps us get a better understanding of, and a better understanding of where the community is in terms of their preference. So these are great discussion points, and we really do appreciate it. Can I answer the question?
Yes.
I will also just add to Commissioner Judd's great comments about the question of why we chose to not divide the west side in any of these maps. That is what we heard from community feedback in the first round as we were gathering input to create these draft maps. These maps are a reflection of what we have heard so far, so if you agree, we want to hear that, and if you disagree, which a lot of folks do, that is also great, and please tell us that too, because the final map will be the synthesis of all the information. So if we end up hearing from a lot of folks, hey, we actually think it's a better idea to divide the west side, and by the way, here's my great idea of how you should do it, that would be extra credit and very helpful. Yet like depending on what we hear, that is an option that is also on the table, right? We're not only going to be voting on one of these three maps. We are really bringing these forward to spark reaction, to spark community feedback, so we can hear what you all want. Thank you.
Yeah, so first off, I just wanted to thank everybody that we had good turnout last night, this is great turnout tonight, let's hope that all of the hearings we get such a good turnout. I think that, I speak for most of us, that we didn't come onto the commission with deep mapping expertise, and we come from all over, different parts of Portland, have lived in various parts of Portland, have lived here all our lives or for, you know, a certain number of years. And one of the things I think I personally have done is learned a lot about commonalities across a lot of parts of Portland that people might not think about. And I would encourage you to go online to the, to our website and try and draw a map because there is a software application on there that's not really difficult, and it lets you kind of take your hand at it. Because the thing that's interesting is that if you say, let's cut the west side up, well, guess where the west side has to cross over, and guess what has to come in with the west side regardless? Because if you cut these maps ribbon horizontally, then all of a sudden, hello, Eastmoreland, you're with the southern part of the west district. If you're up in the north part, which is on the west side, hardly any population because it's pretty much all Forest Park, then you have to cut a big swath of what's across the river in North Portland to be part of that. So there is no perfect map. We could not find one, and I will tell you right now, we won't find one. There will be people who are pissed at us because the map that we end up with doesn't do something that they wish it did. But I would just like to encourage, I grew up in North Portland, spent most of my early days there, went to college there, high school, grade school. I live in southwest Portland now, in the Hillsdale neighborhood, and I just would like to remind folks on the east side that the west side is not, is not all the same. If you come inside into southwest, the southwest part of the west side, you have a lot of neighborhoods that look a lot like parts of the east side, who have, actually care about tree canopies and all kinds of things. They don't have paved streets, they don't have the city, they were actually annexed by the city from the county, and they have a lot of the same concerns that people on the outer east side whose land, whose properties were also annexed into the city have. So I think with 12 councillors, one of the motivations was, there has to be a lot more cross-talking. There's going to be representatives elected from a lot of parts of the city that never have had a representative on city council, but in order to do things, they're going to have to have seven votes. So they're going to have to work across district lines to build community and collaborate.
Basically, there's a lot of good people on the west side.
Thank you, commissioners. Yes, so I would like now to invite people to please come seven, one more?
Yeah, we didn't hit all of them. Yeah, we didn't hit all of Mary's questions. Like, Mary asked a question about, why are we changing this to districts? She also asked a question about what's the advantages and disadvantages of having this district. Is that correct, was Mary saying? Got you. And so...
You'd lose the neighborhood going to the districts.
Got you. Okay, so just going to the first one, unfortunately, I think that the bus of why we change, the building with the voter, the charter change, right? And so, does that, does that help answer your question? Cool. So I think that the, I think we already addressed the issue about the neighborhoods versus the districts. Were you okay with that? Just want to make sure we follow up and answer your question.
I still didn't hear if the neighborhoods go away and it's just...
No, no.
Okay, in fact, the maple map is the only one that has the Brooklyn neighborhood yet.
Thank you. Sorry.
No worries. Just wait, we should recover that. Yeah, good.
So now I see a number of hands raised. I would invite you to please come forward and use the microphone so everyone can hear you better. And so, yeah, please come here, and if you could state your name as you begin your, or as you ask your question, that would be great.
Can I just, really quick, on that district neighborhood question? I think it's, it's just a matter of semantics. If you look at Multnomah County, we have zones, there's four zones that we elect council, the Multnomah County Commissioners from. The district is our, is our word for zones for where we're going to elect council from. Go ahead.
It is on, isn't it? Now, great. When is Laura, or I live in Mount Tabor, but I'm not representing Mount Tabor, and I actually have a quick question about the voting you do in August. It doesn't seem as though it's completely clear how you're going to vote, but given, given what we voted on with 26 to 88, I'm assuming you're using a kind of ranked choice voting? It would be really helpful of us, because you've all been so good at communicating. And I've been watching the commission on Zoom for many, 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 many months now, passing information on to my neighborhood association, but we've learned a lot from you, so if you do that, I'd love to hear how it goes.
Thank you for the suggestion and the question. So again, please, folks who want to ask questions of the commission, please come forward and to the mic so everyone can hear you, and if you, if you will, state your name.
Microphones scare me. Okay, so my name is Babs Venelli, 75 years old, lived in Portland my whole life, currently 972 through 2, old Portland neighborhood, Sullivan's Gulch, in northeast. I'm here tonight because I want to attend at least two meetings, so I'm here, and then next week I will be at the meeting on North Kirby. Okay, so I also have zoomed in to your meetings and am in awe of your tireless determination and dedication and the knowledge that you all have. This isn't really going to be a question, it's going to be a plea. To me, the worst-case scenario would be if all of you, with all your heart and intentions, are able to decide on the districts. The worst-case scenario would be if it would then go to the city council to choose. Please, I implore you, whatever you need to do, however you need to tweak these maps, please use your judgment and your heart and your compassion and your knowledge to make this decision. Don't let them.
Anyone else who wishes to ask a question or make further comments, I invite you to please come to the, to the microphone.
I do have a question, I do have a question, maybe specifically to the Rose City person. I made the suggestion in my testimony to take Madison South, Rose City Park, and Roseway, and put it in the North Portland. When I went back to the table, the North Portland has the least amount of population. Would that work, population-wise or not? I don't know, because I don't have the population numbers in front of me. It doesn't work. Okay. Because that's the commonality, is that Hollywood, Hollywood is the center kind of for the neighborhoods around it. That's why I mentioned Grant Park and Wilshart. That is our county center, it's Rose City's county center. But then you go to the other side of it, on the other side of Rose City Park, and you have Roseway and Madison South, and what do you do there? And for me, Madison South's right across the street. My neighbors across the street are in Madison South. So, anyway, I thought I'd ask that question.
You know, one other thing that I think was mentioned is that one of the overlays we looked at was high school enrollment areas. Now, people may hate the high school enrollment areas, but they are what they are right now, and Roseway, Rose City Park, and Madison South all feed into McDaniel, as Cully does. But the problem with trying to get Cully in there too was, it's just too much population. So there, so it's kind of comes back to, we don't like to split the baby, but there's some places where we just don't have a way to make the numbers work.
Let me ask, let me ask another question really quick, because it's my understanding that Sunder is or wants to go with the east side because of the Park Rose School District. Yeah, I talked to a couple ladies the other night about that. What if you put Cully also over there?
Well, that east side district is already big, so adding Cully into it, because Cully is a really dense neighborhood, and it's got a lot of population, and it's just, you just can't really move it. You'd have to split it. And I also think people need to, maybe they don't know, but those four school districts that are on the east side, they each have one high school. So to try and, and they're, and they are long and narrow school districts, so again, trying to cut them, then all of a sudden you end up with islands of folks who have, who are not even in their own district's high school area. So it's complicated.
I understand. I just thought I'd ask the question since we...
Thank you. I, I want to speak to that as the Rose City resident, and you know, I had said during one of our early meetings to say, "Please don't split Rose City neighborhood, because I am going to the neighborhood meeting next weekend, it's not going to be fun." I do want to clarify that the Alder map was, and I know my colleagues here who worked on that map really did their best to preserve neighborhood boundaries, but I do want to emphasize too, that when we're talking about school district boundaries, we're talking about other boundaries, that's one criteria. We're looking at a deviation from equal population, and we are at the stage right now, and part of my recommendation to folks is to find yourself on the map, on each map, right? And look at the maps and decide, who do I want to be with? I was going to be in a, you know, Hollywood library meeting tonight, you know, with the neighborhood folks. So I understand that connection between Hollywood and the other communities in the area. And I do think we're at the stage where we're looking at big swaths, we're looking at Sandy, and now we're at a stage where we could, this is, the unit that we're looking at are census tracts, right, or not tracts, they're blocks. Yeah, so even smaller than tracts. So we're looking at census tracts. So if you go on the website, you can actually start to add census tracts when you're, when you're thinking about, sorry, census blocks. When you're thinking about at the, the, you know, federal criteria or equal protection criteria, one person, one vote criteria, you want to make sure that you're keeping within that 5% like deviation, so, but it doesn't have to be perfect. And so I think we're at that miniscule level also, where we can start to think about, maybe not whole blocks coming in, or whole neighborhoods being moved over, but where do folks really find that connection? I think that's the level of conversation we're having.
I can't really speak for Hollywood or some of the other neighborhoods, and I, you know, I can't really speak for Rose City Park, although I live there and I am on board. But those neighborhoods are active within the CNN coalition. And my concern is that you're taking away some commonalities or we work together on issues and things like that.
Yeah, and one of the things I had shared even about the Cedar map, just a final response to this, is that folks in Rose City meet on the northern part of Sandy Boulevard, and so you're actually just splitting right through, you're splitting folks up in their community spaces in terms of where they meet and congregate. So I do think these are going to be relevant conversations as we come to a final map.
We actually lead the German American Society, which is on the, you're aware of that, obviously. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Anyone else who wishes to ask questions or make further comments, I invite you to come to the podium.
Michael Escudero, 97214. How long are these districts in place then? Because it seems like, kind of what's floating around my head is that no one here wants to be part of the west side. But maybe like downtown has been impacted as a flake, and has a lot of capacity, but not a lot of residents. Like, many people have like left downtown, right? And maybe those people, like when they move back, now all of a sudden, the west side actually has enough population to be representative, and you wouldn't need to steal any, you wouldn't need to district any east, yes, adjust east side neighborhoods to be part of the west side now? So like, are these districts, you know...
20, 30.
20, 30. Got it? Because there is a...
It's every 10 years.
Yeah, which downtown all of a sudden becomes more densely.
Thank you. Again, anybody else who wishes to make comments or ask questions?
I'm Mary Ann Schwab. I've lived in my neighborhood since 1971, a block under the most beautiful park in the city. We're in queue to finish the park plans. The school district there, the Parks Bureau is still looking for funds to finish that plan that we reviewed with a fine-tooth comb in 1996, when we had three-quarters of a million dollars, and some commissioner took over half of it away, and that park's not finished. Also with parks and swimming pools sailing our schools. Washington School was closed. We did everything in our power, Susan Lindsay and probably other people here too, to try to get a community center on 12th and Stark. We had been waiting 45 years. I read the Portland Tribune, great little newspaper, somehow they found over $5 million, and they're going to fix the one in northeast Portland. Remember, we all, this is a community. There's no voices here for kids. So the whole community really, really wanted this, and we didn't get anywhere. So my concern was money. If we don't have money to finish what we've already started, and I swear, it's 45 years now since Washington High School closed, that the plans are finished, I delivered them to city council, I deliver them to the archives, we've already paid for the, the plans. We already knew how the water would come out, the chloride, and go into a water fountain and have a splash can. All this work is done, and I'm not being able to jump in the park yet. And when a very friendly Parks Commissioner said, "Mary Ann, we can't do a thing about this until we finish the parks levy." We had six weeks to go, but tragically, he's not here. We were going to jump in the pool, I even know where the gins and swimming suits are. Really have a fun party. But my voice is not being heard. The voice is, we just do all this work, you're doing all this work, and you're going to really feel, what did I waste my time doing this for? But I'm doing it for kids. I want our children to be safe crossing streets. I wanted myself to be able to cross my street on Stark and 39th. That street is so narrow, and where Peabody Paul's in and puts these crazy crosswords, I don't know, I come pretty close to being hit twice with this thing, because they're going the wrong direction. Who's paying attention to little details? The little details, what are these people going to do, 12 more people? Where's this money coming from? They're all going to need a computer, they're all going to need an office, they're all going to do this. What is their training? What is their skill? I want to vote for these people. I just don't want to have somebody say, "I'll pick you, I'll pick you," oh, he's a so-and-so relative of so-and-so. That's not how this is working. I want to know exactly what your intention is as a committee. If any of you decided to take a position, I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem if anybody in this room wanted to do it. I applaud them for at least trying, and that's what I'm trying to do. Let's really look at this puzzle as related to the elderly, because they don't have a voice. When I looked at the Portland Tribune today, there was, people don't have computers. How are they even going to find where these meetings are? That's a whole demographic that's not even here, let alone the little kids at the, finally, finally back at Lorcares Park, finally. And we also have many, many people that have been hit by cars. I have been up at the Quakers helping Pat Schreiber prepare meals again. She's been doing it over 40 years, and did anybody give her a Spirit of Portland award? No, she was a wrong color. That was the year everybody had, I told my son, I had to come here with a green makeup and an orange nose. He said, "Don't do that, Mom, you just painted your house, and I'll smash your windows." He'd be furious if he knew I was up here jibber-jabbering. But I am venting, and I am so angry because I'm at the end of my time. I told him I'd only live to be 103, and I still want to be in that swimming pool at Washington High School. And how, who are we going to pay for it? How are you going to vote for these people that have the skill to do the city? I've been at Southeast Uplift, I can't tell you how many times, no one's ever in that building. And I want to protect those buildings. The city has no right to sell property that was donated in perpetuity for the next generation. And you'll go back to the Rose City Golf Course. We, she's not in office anymore, I'm very happy to say. She wanted to use half of that golf course for subsidized housing. Subsidized housing, if you make $65,500 a year, you get a $600 subsidy. And all of these condos going up, the land is so cheap, talk about 2035, I wouldn't even go there. I won't tell you the hours I put in that one. So, and I'm not alone. A lot of people here care, and I don't, if you've read the Neighborhood Association testimony that Mary Peterson put in back in 1978, we had, we didn't have cell phones, at least off the freeway, because people care. And I hope that in the heavens who's ever watching this, just don't touch my house with paint and break my windows.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who would like to provide comments or ask questions?
Well, I will say, we also know that standing up in front of the room at a mic is not the way for everyone who feels comfortable to give feedback. And so on the wall to my left, to your right over there, we've got some giant Post-it notes. That is another opportunity for all of you to give feedback before you leave tonight. The three prompts are, looking at these district maps I like, looking at these district maps I wish, and looking at these district maps what if. And there's Post-its over there, so if there's things that you like, things that you wish that were different, or things that you're thinking about that you would invite us to consider, we really invite you to add a couple Post-its on your way out. And I believe on that same wall, we also have the opportunity to just do a quick, a quick poll with some stickers of, of the three maps. If it were up to you to vote today, would you vote for Alder, Cedar, Maple, or none of the above? That'll help us, again, just get a poll check of everyone in the room, including the folks who didn't come up and share their remarks off the mic. So wanted to put that plug, and since I started to see some folks moving, but I do believe we're still open for additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. And yes, we've learned from the Zoom era of meetings that you want to wait for seven seconds of uncomfortable silence before moving on to the next topic. So ask the question again and wait for seven seconds. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony or, excuse me, or ask questions or make comments? I was, thank you, Commissioner. So thank you, everyone. This concludes our public testimony and questions. We thank everyone who showed up today to testify and to inform the independent commission process. We'll now want to end our time together by hearing some closing remarks from the independent, one of our independent district commissioners, or more if they feel so inclined to make comments. So I'll open this now to any of our commissioners here who would like to... So I'll open this now to any of our commissioners here who would like to provide some reflections or comments on what we've heard so far. Commissioners, anyone?
The thing I want to reflect on is that if this were a straightforward demographic process of kind of balancing the numbers, it would have been much simpler and we wouldn't need a commission to hear about what the public thinks, how we should execute on something that the public approved, which is to create these four electoral districts. So it's been an honor to observe alongside my fellow commissioners in trying to draw up a map that truly reflects the intent of the voters, but also the voice of everybody that we've heard so far. We have some technical challenges, like a river, to deal with in doing this. And I just, for myself, want to assure you that every time we have a meeting, and we have more than 10 of them, where we spend three hours at a time poring over these maps and the considerations that we do the job really seriously, but that the result is going to be imperfect, but it is one further step in trying to perfect the democracy in our, in our city, and we're really working hard. So I want to appreciate everybody who showed up today to continue in that process.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else from the commission who would like to make some comments or provide reflection?
I just want to say deep gratitude to each and every one of you for taking a couple of hours out of your Thursday night. There are a lot of other places you could be besides being here in a basement with all of us, and we're just really, really appreciative, because this process will be what all of you make of it, and your feedback along the way makes it better. So, thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Now, in the imperfect world, if it were up to me, I'd leave the West Side chopped off, even though they don't have the same number of populations, and not have to try to adjust the population balance. But unfortunately, that's not what we have to do. But the impact of what you have said has been very profound, and I think that we take it very seriously. We want, we want you to understand that this has been an integral process and a very meaningful process for all of us. And I appreciate all of your time and effort, even in just following along. So thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just want to thank Matthew for hanging in there. I take a lot of hits from the bucking committee. Keep your head up, keep your head up. And then just honestly, you know, the, it, when we started this, I, well, not, I won't say when we started this, the effort is completing the drawing of maps. But in actuality, what the goal is, is to draw relationships. How does your house fit into your community? How does your community radiate to your neighboring community? And who would you like to partner with in terms of other community partners? What is that common interest of mine? And as we, as a community, as a, as a, as a city of Portland, go through this, this inaugural effort, I think this is what commissioners are aware of. We, we will not get those relationships correct, right? It's just so nuanced that this is going to be the best effort that the communities collectively can do at this particular time. But that's why, understanding those relationships and having this conversation about, you know, this, we have something in common with this community, this community not so much, is really important. But also I think that the thing to recall is that hopefully, no matter where you wind up, you, we're still Portland strong, this is still a Portland community, and that we can all pull together and support this until we have an opportunity to make things better. So it's a continuum that we're on, not a, you know, kind of a short end road. So I hope you appreciate, we appreciate all of your comments and the task ahead of us, and we appreciate that as a collective Portland community as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Great, thank you. So as a final reminder, the public comment period closes on July 22nd, and you can submit public comments also by emailing districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov, by calling 311, by filling out our online survey at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission/draftplan. You can also fill a comment, a public comment form tonight as you exit at the meeting. Oh, and you can also email, excuse me, mail your written comments to Independent District Commission, Office of Management and Finance, 1120 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Room 901, Portland, Oregon 97204. Thank you so much to our interpreters, to our commissioners, and the staff. And a special thank you again to all of you for showing up to testify and provide comments tonight. This meeting, this hearing is now adjourned, and I invite you to provide additional comments and learn more about the other processes. We'll be here for a little longer, and we'll be happy to talk to you one-on-one as well. Thank you, and good night.